You had to put a sweater on as well.
You're freezing.
I turned it up for you guys.
It's still nice outside. All right, it's six o'clock. We'll get started with our regular meeting and call it to order. And Ms. Willie's gonna do the pledge and Pam is gonna do the prayer, of course, if you don't mind.
Father God, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here together tonight as a community. We pray that you would be here with us in this meeting and that all our decisions would be made with the best interest of the citizens of this town. We thank you for the opportunity to have this position here to help make these decisions and we pray that you would just give us guidance, patience, and peace with our decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank y'all. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Yes. Ms. Cranberry?
Hello.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
And Ms. Johnston?
Here.
All present.
All right, approval and correction of prior meetings. We got four sets because we had a...
Two specials.
Two specials and one regular. So, once you've had a chance to review, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the study session, regular meeting, and the two special call meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Is that okay with them doing all that together?
Yeah, if they don't have any changes to any of them.
Yeah.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got a big night, folks. We got a proclamation for Paul Turner. So, Paul, if you'd come forward and if any of the airport board staff or board members would like to come forward and were part of this, I'd welcome you up here. Anybody who'd like to come as well.
Can you read that small print there?
I'm not gonna read all this. I know too much about Paul. I don't have to read. I'm not gonna read all this because you can see it's a really fine print and it's a lot of talk. What I want to say about this is that Paul is a huge, huge part of murder region. I like Paul at Mount Pleasant Airport for whatever reason. It's called murder region where Paul's been there for 14, for 15 years. He served as manager for life, 14. It's a real reason we're here. Paul was named the airport manager of the year by the airport authority of the state. We've got some numbers that we've got that go back, the last current number we have on the airport's numbers of the benefit that it has to our community. It's $13.9 million. And I can tell you, since you got the runway repaved, that was all paid for by the FAA, by the way. New lights and everything as well. Air traffic has picked up exponentially. Being kind.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm gonna read a little bit of this. Whereas Paul has been at Murder Regional Airport for 15 years and served as manager for 14, the safety deputy K M R C, which is the call letters through the radio, over that time speaks to Paul's personal commitment to keeping the airport in top shape. I always make the right decision regarding airfield operations in challenging conditions. Yearly fuel cells exceed 200,000 gallons with only 25 base aircraft. Use this resource by being preferred destination for cargo operations and support in automotive industry operating south of Nashville. General Motors Ford, Chrysler, Nissan, and 26 other manufacturers use it for. It's got a 6,000-foot runway, which is biggest in the 80s. Y'all are having in there right now. Fixed up and a lot of it is mostly freight going in, coming in for automotive manufacturing. Corporate clients, I see them out there a lot. We have a, I think if we, guys, if we had a 250,000 square foot in there, we probably had a pool right now. So, Paul, I'll have to say you add a lot of value to the community that people just don't see. Paul keeps automobiles out there for some people that have homes here but maybe work other places. We're not gonna go into names because I think they would prefer we didn't. But he keeps cars out there for them. He shuttles folks to get food when they fly in. A lot of times when the military is in, Paul will take them to get lunch and things like that. So, this proclamation is just something that I felt very strongly about. You just named me one thing that we've gotten this community to generate $14 million for. Basically, Paul did what? So, there it is. This time after time is the chairman of the board, Greg Martin, friends for too long, probably, representing and Justin. And all three of these gentlemen also have aircraft there as well. So, they are not just a board member. They are supporting the airport as well. So, anything y'all'd like to add right quick?
It's hard to express how important Paul really is to the airport's operations. His particular gift is he treats everybody the same, which is like their old friends and doesn't matter how famous you are or not. And the real thing is people really appreciate you and I. So, it's been, it's been a great run for Paul and we've just turned him down.
Great.
I think Paul exemplifies, you know, the caliber of people that attract families and businesses into this area. He's a welcome wagon. We were talking about this in our authority meeting just today. People come in, he's the first person they see. They will see him before they see the mayor, Chamber of Commerce, Murray Alliance. That's a first impression. That is a great place to be all from. Thank you, Paul.
He almost lives there.
Just say anything more than they've already covered. We're lucky to have Paul.
Yeah, Mike, you're one that said, "Work."
Yeah, Mike, I just like saying one thing. Paul, I don't, it's like the mayor says, you know, people don't realize how much gas we get. And I guess it's the board, you know, because you can ask people that fly in from different places, where do you want to get your gas at when they fly out? It's Mount Pleasant. And I just appreciate Joe, what you're doing.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Paul, you guys, anything you'd like to say to the group?
You only have 15 minutes.
Yeah. First off, I wanted to thank the airport authority. If it wasn't for them, you know, I wouldn't be here. My wife and two other ladies that work with me, they work really hard. I mean, I can call them anytime of night. They come out middle of night to unload that freight because it always comes in the middle of night. I hate that it wakes everybody up in the middle of the night because it's a big plane. But, you know, we, we're out there, unload it cold, wind, rain, whatever, we get it done. So, without them, you know, we're a team. I love waking up at 5:30 in the morning, coming to work every day. I love driving through, seeing all the progress, seeing all, you know, there's some, there's some big names that come through that airport that a lot of people don't know. And, you know, we, I mean, we just, we had something just the other day. And, you know, I, I would invite everybody to dinner at one of our singer's restaurants because he invited me out. He for my award too. He invited me to his restaurants and steakhouse. So, like I say, I'm gonna send everybody out there. But, things like that, when someone like that sees it and invites me out there, I was, I was pretty taken back. But, like I say, they're like friends. I keep their privacy. I keep them, you know. And the other thing that was said, we're the first people they see. And, you know, they're potential people coming in here. You'd be surprised how many people don't have an airplane just because we don't have room yet. It's still come here and buy all their fuel. So, I mean, it's, it's amazing. There's, there's a lot. There's a lot of that. And I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. I'm hoping to stay here a long time. That new terminal, I appreciate everything everybody's done. Would help in getting the terminal going and getting it built. It's gonna be exciting. I'm telling everybody, I have pictures all over the place. It's gonna be a lot of fun. It's gonna be a nice, nice setup.
Do we need a good picture, Kate?
Yeah, let's get some.
We gotta get, get a good picture with all you guys in it.
Come on, Mike.
Be my Christmas call.
Board, like you have, you think you made this job with Paul and would you forward it to your church? Guys, thank y'all for being here very much.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you again. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
All righty. Very, very quiet little giant out there. So, nice to have completion review of unfinished business.
None at this time. Thank.
Okay. Monthly report from Mayor, and I've got three things to touch on real quick. First one is, I got a letter on April the 10th from the Tennessee Public Utility Commission. It was a very great report about our Mount Pleasant Gas Public Awareness Program and supporting documentation. And it was all found to meet general compliance. And that's a hard puppy to cross with gas. So, that's a, that's a nice thing to have. And thanks to the staff. Some of you are here. And thank y'all. April the 29th, correct, at 7:00 PM?
I think it's 5:00.
5:00 to 7:00. We're gonna have USDA here. USDA offers, we've got a lot of our sewer improvement projects going through them. We're actually all of them. But they have a very nice program for citizens of the community that qualify. And Ms. Willie kinda drove this car in that, no, she had one person before that got, got a grant out of it. And we've asked them to come here and spend two hours speaking with everybody about what your opportunities may be. And so, that'll be on that night from 5:00 to 7:00.
Here.
Right here. And then, the last thing I've got is the first Music on the Port series is Saturday night at Jennifer Graham's, which is just right over there. And I would encourage, I hope, not going with the weather holds out, but got a great guy out of Hunts, Hunts? No. Muscle Shoals coming. So, I hope everybody that can will try to make time to attend. That's all I've got. Monthly financial budget report.
I already have all the commissioners before the meeting gave me their nonprofit sheets. Ms. Cranberry, I think yours is the only one I can get with you after the meeting. This is just me getting some guidance on what you all want me to put in the budget. And then when we go into the individual meetings, that just gives me a bottom line amount on the general fund. So, I know which way everybody wants to go with. Do we want to do the increases or not, since we have about three on there that are different from last year?
Okay.
Or one of them that we told them we weren't gonna fund them again, and they've asked for the money again. So, I'll get with you right after the meeting. But like I said, this is not an official vote. We'll still vote on the budget. We'll still have our individual meetings to review everything. It's just a FYI-type thing for me to just get the budget prepared before I meet with y'all next week. That's the other thing. I was gonna email you all this week to start setting up the individual meetings. The dates were the 23rd to the 26th. So, if you all have any preferred dates, you want any time, I'm here all week. So, if you all just want to let me know when you all want to meet between the 23rd and the 26th, I'll go ahead and put you all down and we can get our individual budget meetings started. So, that way when we meet in May, it's completely pretty much finalized. On the reports, there's three that I would say was, three reports that I always say that you should probably look at is the net position report. It is, it's the, Ms. Willie, it's not gonna be, it's the emails. I don't think Teresa prints those out. Does she print them out?
No, because they're huge.
They're huge. Yeah, I'll probably send y'all like 200 pictures.
No, okay.
So, the net, and you will have it in your email, but the net position report, I should have probably connected to the projector, but every month I'd say our funds look good. But I do want to clarify, like when I'm saying that, I'm just saying our department heads are doing a good job of not spending every dollar we budgeted. Because we budgeted our enterprise funds to pretty much not have major profits, but to meet all of our expenditures and stuff. But we have controlled a lot of our spending and also not only have, the water department has not only reduced their spending in a way, but they've also improved on the leak. So, that helps our revenue because we're not spending as much money on chemicals. And we're also bringing in more revenue because we're actually billing, not just wasting water through leaks. So, overall, like the budget's looking good on all of our funds at the moment. General funds looking good. Enterprise funds are looking good. But that net position report actually shows you where our bottom line stands on all of our enterprise funds. So, that's a good report to look at just to see. But also keep in mind, when I'm showing you that net profit at the bottom for each month, that means that's the bottom line amount we have. So, when we decide to borrow something or when we decide to fund something, that's where we are. So, even though the fund may say we have $200,000, that doesn't go a long way in a water fund. You know, one bad situation could deplete all of that. So, just something to keep in mind, because I've gotten some questions like, you know, and I just want the community to know too. Like, we always say our funds are looking good and there are surpluses, but that doesn't mean we need to continue on that same track as my goal.
Future projects and...
Future projects. We have a lot of projects that we approved in the rate study. So, you know, we've done slowly. We're doing them and we're going through engineering and all of that. But just little point of clarification on that, just because I've received some questions like, you know, because we did have rate increases and things of that nature, that's helped us. But our departments are also spending money wisely. And also, we're gonna stop purchasing in May. So, where we stand probably next, in the next couple of weeks is where we're gonna pretty much end up, except for salaries and operational costs that are day-to-day. The rest of the funds are good. And we're starting the capital downtown project. It's supposed to start here pretty soon. So, that 171 fund, which is our capital projects ones, that's where you will see most of that money coming out.
The actual start date for that is June 3rd.
Yes.
The cash transfers report, the cash transfers report is, I update it if I do any new CDs, if I move any money within banks, because usually me and Kate are the only two people who know. And I think every month I just need to give you a snapshot. So, this month we did do a major CD with the gas fund because for some reason, we just had not put, like we had more money sitting in an account that I was like, why do we, we don't use that much in it. So, we did a $1 million CD. So, I have that in the report. I just want y'all to know that, just so that it earns more interest. It was just sitting in the checking account. I'm like, we do not use that much money in our general operation. So, usually what I keep in operations accounts now is what we are actually going to need to operate. Rest of the money, either keep them in construction or savings. Just wanted you to know that. If y'all have any questions.
Any questions for Shipper? Any non-entertaining motion for approval?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Monthly report from city manager.
Mayor and commissioners, I just wanted to remind you, and we will send an email out, but a week from Friday on April 26th at 11:00, we're gonna unveil the Darryl Dean Water Treatment Plant sign. And we're gonna have just kind of finger foods afterwards and celebrate that. And we all want you there. And his family will be there. And employees from utilities will be there as well. Only, he's only worked for us for 47 years. So, well deserved. And then did also want to let each of you know that we have ordered, we've gone through the purchasing process and we've ordered the concrete for the basketball goals and the pavilion. And we've ordered the pavilion materials. And it's a tight schedule, but we're hoping to get on it right away. We were able to get it at a cost where we could award it through our purchasing policies and didn't have to go to you guys for an approval. And then the mayor already mentioned the porch concert, but that's all I had.
Parked in Recreation. We're having that meeting.
We had it Sunday.
We had it Sunday. It was not a very good turnout. I'm not sure what the next step is on that.
We plan to have three.
Okay.
We plan to have three to give everybody an opportunity.
And if we need to be doing a better job on social media, getting the word out, I'm not sure what that is. But we didn't have many on Sunday for sure.
Okay. What was the date and time again for Darryl Dean?
11:00 AM. And it's April 26th. That's a Friday, a week from this Friday. And then we're just kind of all going back into the water plant and having some snacks and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Special reports on city departments wastewater and Mount Pleasant gas.
The gas system is just plugging right along. There is not much of an update there at all in the wastewater system. We are making progress on Rainy Street. We're getting to the point where we're gonna close it out. We did have a problem with the contractor that we're working through. And then we still are waiting for some electric equipment at the actual wastewater plant. But everything is still on track for it to be completed in 2024, which has always been the goal. And any letters of availability for development all state that the sewer plant has to be fixed and it's on track for that. So, we're doing well there. And then what you all approved as far as the wastewater model last year, we actually are meeting on next week on where we are with that as well. So, that's what we're moving forward to.
Any questions for Kate on this? All righty. We'll move into new business ordinance 2024-1122. It says the first reading, an ordinance to convert traffic flow on Howard Street in the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, one-way southwest to one-way northeast. And describe more accurately within the body of the ordinance.
And mayor commissioners, we're basically moving the traffic that now goes from Colombian Avenue to Bluegrass, exiting on Bluegrass, to the opposite way from Bluegrass to Colombian. It will require two readings, and it does need to go in front of the planning commission. And it's gonna be on the agenda for the planning commission on May 14th. So, by the time you have it in front of you for the second reading, we'll have gone through the planning commission.
Okay.
And we did have the engineer from MTS recommend that, and that's in your package.
Yeah, it was a part of your package as well, if you were able to get a look at it.
Did we notify the people in area?
Yes.
There'll be two public hearings for this, one before the planning commission and then another one before this commission.
Letters went out in the mail for that one for sure.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none. Entertaining motion?
Mayor, I make a motion in favor ordinance 2024-1122 as presented.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2024-1123. Again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to vacate part of Public Square Street in the city of Mount Pleasant.
Mayor and commissioners, as part of the downtown revitalization, we will be closing the road here in front of the grill. So, if you enter the square, the square will become larger with this big project. If you enter the square, you'll have to exit through glass. That's the only way to get out. So, again, we're changing the traffic flow. So, we need to go through the planning commission. Our engineers for this project that's been ongoing for 14 years, I'll recommend this. It's really not safe if you ever try and take a left turn out of there. But in answer to a question that may come up, we've not sent letters on this yet, but we will for the planning commission and the next city commission.
On this, and I agree with you, it was unsafe going out there because I rode that way a lot of times. And people don't let you out. And people begging out of parks is an issue. But the museum is concerned because of the fact that they only got the front door to bring stuff into the museum when the trucks and stuff comes. And how would the trucks park to get this stuff into the vehicle?
It'll be right on Glass Street. And it'll be also be handicapped accessible right there. So.
I'll pass that on.
Mike?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, it does need to be done. I'm like you, but that's history that's going away. Everybody used to remember going around the square.
All right.
But it's just history going away. But it's something that needs to be...
And they leave the window to pay their utilities where it says, "No left turn. Take left turn." No, no way to go this way. And they all go that way. So, it's, but yeah, it's taking away some history for sure.
I will add that this ordinance, I had it where it goes into effect when the downtown project starts. That might not be what y'all want it to be, but that was my assumption.
It won't happen till then. So, yeah.
If it's different than that, we need to make that change before...
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Entertaining motion for approval.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2024-1123 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2024-10. Resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant amending the fixed asset policy.
And I'm gonna, mayor and commissioners, I'm letting Shipper speak towards this as she did at the study session. It's not that huge of a change, but make sure y'all understand it. We passed this original resolution back in June of 2023. Just, we needed to have something in writing on how we, something that we were already doing. We just didn't have it written down. We're probably, as we go along, we probably need a proper fixed asset policy, which is, we've read some other cities and they're, they're pretty lengthy and detailed. And as we grow, we probably will expand as policy as well. But right now, we're just adding the word intangibles to the definition of capital assets because we don't have that. And that just means anything that we may pay a lot of money for right now, that is not a physical item. It could be a computer meters. This, this main scenario on this is sewer model. This one was the sewer model. It's not an actual physical model that will bring to you or anything. It's just a computer-generated software that you plug in things to. But we're also paying $200,000 for it. So, we just need to, for enterprise funds to be able to account for some of these intangibles, it's important to have this in our policy. And then the other part that we're adding to it is the non, the departmental non-capital assets. So, what this means is if we were to do bulk improvements to our water systems through our system, gas system with meters, the individual items themselves are not $5,000, which is our fixed asset threshold. But the bulk purchase, we did a major improvement to our system. So, if we do that, then we can actually account for them as a bulk update. So, that's the two changes in this policy. Any questions?
Any questions for Shipper on the fixed asset piece? Don't think about it till you buy that many meters and all of a sudden it's a big number.
We're about $200,000 on a model.
Yeah, so.
But we knew that.
Yeah, we did.
But this is, this is making it right.
An asset.
It just helps the enterprise funds if we can depreciate them.
I do appreciate.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we need a motion on this, please.
Make a motion. We passed the resolution 2024-10 as presented.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nonprofit organizations, and again, Shipper and Kate talked about this early on. If you haven't turned that in, please do.
I don't know if anybody has signed up to speak. I don't know, I'm not aware of that. But, okay. So, we just had on there for that purpose because we talked about this month would be the month to come forward.
Yeah. Okay.
We did have a county animal shelter here and senior center here on Thursday.
Yeah. All right. Purchase new tractor for utilities for $165,000. And for everybody's information, we discussed this at length Thursday night. And this is the tractor. It's got the boom hanging off the side of it. It's got the bush hog on the side of it. It's got the pumps and everything on the back. And it's a, it's a big rig. Tractors are more expensive than they've ever been. So, the, the purchase price, we're gonna keep it under $165,000. And they've done a good job shopping for them because they got some of the government bills on it so that we can save some money through that way as well. So.
And I think Mayor, what you're saying is exactly right. But also, I think Ted went into, he's tried to fix what we have. And the cost of fixing it's almost ridiculous. We will, we will surplus our existing and sell it and get whatever we can out of it. But he's gone all the way from past Columbia to Lawrenceburg just to figure out if there was a better way to do it. And missing anything, Philip?
Okay. I mean, thankfully, he said we had to just completely take it apart to do even start fixing it and then put it all back together.
That was gonna cost $30,000.
They were gonna talk hard, just $30,000 to take it apart.
Kate, what's the problem with lifespan of a new one when we're looking at the John Deere?
We usually depreciate them for 10 years, but I think his previous ones lasted us like 15 or 18.
Yeah.
More like almost, almost 20.
Almost 20.
We bought the one we have right now for $80,000 in 2011. Yeah. I mean, it was $80,000 then, which seems ridiculous. This seems ridiculous, but they're incredibly expensive.
Yep. Everything going. All right. Entertaining motion?
I make a motion that we purchase a new tractor for utilities.
John Deere.
John Deere green. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Discussion and consideration of city manager position, including the appropriate mixed steps in the hiring process and or choosing to move forward with one candidate and authorizing the city hiring process and city attorney to proceed with the appropriate hiring due diligence, after which an employment offer and other supporting documentation may be prepared. Corey, is there anything you'd like to say as we start this?
Um, yeah, I just said the update. You all had interviews, you had formal interviews with the candidates that you had selected. And then you had a special called meeting on April the 8th where you decided how to move forward and you chose to narrow it down to two candidates and to have the opportunity to talk with those candidates individually, one-on-one, last Thursday before our study session. And so really what we're doing now is I'm asking for you all to deliberate on the candidates that you've narrowed it down to and decide how you'd like to proceed. This notice is broad enough that you can do plenty of, you can make plenty of, take different actions in this case. So I'm here to answer questions. I've also provided y'all some documents. These are sample contracts, or one's a sample contract, one is a list of potential terms of the contract that you might could consider, you could talk about today. You don't have to do any of that. I just thought you might need a reference, so I'm here to answer your questions.
Y'all have got these correct? We'll make sure everybody's got a copy of it.
It's now the right time to also say that we may want to have a special call meeting two weeks out or so to once you, anything that happens tonight would follow that we could follow up on.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd need.
You have to do what you're going to do first, though.
We need some guidance.
Yeah.
Then, then we'll talk about next steps. Do you have a question for me?
Well, I guess it's a question for the whole board, I guess. Because after the meeting, I guess Thursday, I think, you know, Steve got, you know, it looked like it's going that, that way. And that's okay, but I'm going to make sure we do due diligence on our prospects, not saying nothing to Steve, but I'm just talking about money wise. Has, has anybody took like from what Steve or even Philip wanted? And just come to a figure and see what it comes out to? Has anybody even done that?
Kate provided it to all of them.
Send us all that, yeah.
Kate provided that to each one of us.
Did you figure it out what Steve would come up with?
It was all in that email.
It was all in that email?
No, no.
Yes, it was.
No, no.
I think it can.
May I, may I?
Go ahead.
Go ahead and finish. Which I don't know. And this here's the way it's going. Like right now, if Steve says he wants 145,000, you say, we say yes. And you will be the one that's negotiating the contract. But when we say yes, I think we sort of need to know a little bit more what it's going to cost our citizens. Because if you take Steve at, at 145, and I mean, Steve, you may go down. I'm just, I'm just giving this right here at 145. So if you do the 8% that Kate had and the 5%, 5,000 for car allowance, you know, we're up to 161,000. I just want us to, to realize, you know, what these figures are coming up to.
The education is higher than mine because he is the masters. Yeah. So it would be, it's like 167 or 164.7. And that was in my email to leave you.
But I'm not, I mean, it was in the email, but not what they're exactly costing us.
He sent us a list of other city managers in the surrounding areas, so that what he.
I'm not saying about other city managers. We're talking about the city.
That was in the cash one to the other email.
Right. What I'm saying is we don't have to go with the salary that he requested.
Okay, again, I don't know, but let's go ahead.
Let me see if I can get us going in the same direction as a group. So you've narrowed it down to two candidates, right? You did have discussion at your study session and what Mr. Davis is saying is correct. It looks like, you know, we might be headed toward Mr. Cross, okay? Kate has provided some financial information on both of the two candidates that y'all would know what their expectations are. However, your city charter expressly says that the Board of Commissioners shall appoint and fix the salary of the city manager who shall serve at the will of the board. Okay? So the way I would perceive this going is that this board would, like if you wanted to move forward with Mr. Cross, he would say, I feel comfortable with him. I would like to offer him a position as a city manager and I would like the salary that we offer him to be X. Okay? So you understand what his expectations are. You also have the ability as a city commission to set that salary and make an offer. You know, you're not bound by what he said his expectations are. So there are lots of different, I think the other point you're getting at is there are different components of salary. Right? There's a base salary. There's also benefits. There's also like the terms of the contract, an educational incentive, vehicle allowance, vacation time, professional membership. All of those things are negotiable, right? You don't have to offer any of those things, but you have to offer a salary. But you don't have to offer any of those things. You can offer a sum in the hall. I will, on the sheet that I handed you out, I will remind you that on your job announcement, you put that salary would be commensurate, a compensation would be commensurate with education and experience. So when you are deciding what salary to offer either candidate, I think that you should consider their education and experience and act accordingly. I also will add, there is no current salary range for a city manager. You obviously know what you pay Ms. Collier. And your, whatever you decide to offer to somebody, if they accept it, you'll modify that budget, you know, next year if it's different than what you already have. Another point I didn't even put on this list, but you know, start times and things like that would be something that you would negotiate. So if you wanted to just say, we want to move forward with Mr. Cross and just have the city attorney do due diligence on him, call references, talk about salary, all of that, we could do that. You could also kind of give me parameters, you know, as far as how to negotiate a contract with either candidate. But I don't, I also think Mr. Davis is correct. I would not like you to give me a range of salaries because we, pretty much if you're going to offer a salary, just go ahead and offer, say this is the amount we're going to agree to pay. You know, and it doesn't have to be, I mean, that, that, all of that is what you're supposed to discuss today. Yes, sir.
Is this wrong of me asking? Steve, if, if it was voted in for you to be our next city manager.
She'll negotiate that.
Oh, may you ask, may you ask, may you ask Steve Cross for, for me, what would it take him to be our city manager? I know he's got 145,000.
I mean, what you're supposed to be doing right now is talking amongst yourselves and to decide what y'all are willing to offer.
Try to.
Talk to each other.
Okay, this is how we're going to do this. Pam?
Yes, sir.
You're, you've got the floor, please.
I think one thing that I would like to consider is that Mr. Cross has a lot of education. He's got a lot of experience. He has not been a city manager before. So I think you take that into consideration as far as what our salary would, we would want to offer. That, that's something that, you haven't actually done that. So I would think that that would, in my mind, bring it down from the requested amount. And I'm not sure how far down that would go. But I think once, once you've got that experience, that's, that's one thing. But when you don't have that yet, it's not proven that you have done that job. Then that's really important for us to take into consideration on the salary end.
And then I think after a year, I agree with you, Ms. Johnson, you know, we can come back and I guess negotiate that price then, whether we go forward or, you know.
Correct. All of that is negotiable. I will say with a city manager, under this, under y'all's charter, with the city manager, you cannot fire them within a year unless they, except for incompetent, malfeasance, misfeasance, or neglect of duty. Okay? So when you offer somebody employment for this position, you're, you're getting them for a year. And again, if they accept, with the exception of those potential actions or lack thereof. So I think, again, we're a little bit ahead of getting the cart ahead of the horse. So at the study session on Thursday, you all discussed the two candidates and you expressed your, you know, desire to maybe move forward with Mr. Cross. Is that what we're talking about today?
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Just a second, we're going, we're going to have a conversation just as far as ready.
I would like y'all to talk for the benefit of the minutes and the public and applicants even, like, to discuss where you are as far as we interviewed these people. Here's how I feel. Here's what we would like to do. Talk about the salary before. You don't have to make a motion right away. You can have this discussion right now.
That's correct.
Mr. Davis has his hand up.
I wouldn't, but that's the question.
Mayor's got to say.
I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm moving down the line.
You got to say so.
You go ahead, Mike.
No, no. All right, I'm going to go ahead and say something. Well, me to say a yes or no, I mean, I sort of like to know. I know there's going to be negotiations going on. I understand that. I mean, if we say, I guess the cart before the horse or whatever, and sometimes that's, that's exactly what, what's happening. I mean, we sort of need to know, you know, it states in his what, what he would like to have. We already know what he, he wants. It's in there. Only thing we don't know, and it's a concern to me, is how much Steve, it will take for him to be city manager. And like Kate gets an 8% and I don't know, Kate, if that's standard or, you know, or how that, that part works.
It's according to our handbook, but that's negotiable. You don't have to like that. Yeah.
Yes. But I mean, that's what I'm telling you. Some of this stuff needs, needs to be known.
Maybe we should have also said that anything that's negotiated will come back to you as a contract approval.
It sure will.
You, you, you will have to approve that.
It will come back to this.
She's just looking for some guidance.
That's the reason why we're already talking about a special call meeting.
No, you go ahead.
No, I'm good.
You go down there first. Go ahead.
One of y'all go, please.
Thank you, may I? My concern is with both of them and the increases. And I'm still saying that I'm not willing to go pass a year's contract. Two years pending for the simple reason is we need to see what's going to happen, how they're going to turn out. Three commissioners may not be up here next year. And three more commissioners may not like that city manager because they're not doing the job right. Now we're stuck paying two commissioners. We cannot afford these salaries to the Mount Pleasant. We cannot. I don't want nobody to say we can't. I pay taxes. We can't.
Anything else, Ms. Granberry?
No, sir. I would like to have them when they're at this price.
Okay. Willie, you will drive this.
I was just going to say, can we not, since everybody's spoken now, can we not just give you permission to go ahead and negotiate the contract with Mr. Cross? I guess you need a, a figure to go on or would that come back to us?
We, we can do it multiple ways, you know? If, if you're wanting me to make an offer or to prepare a contract to come back before y'all in May, it would be helpful or in a special form, it would be helpful to kind of know some of these terms. Because if you'll see with the draft I gave you, there's a lot of terms that are.
So I could throw out a amount.
Yeah.
Yes, you could throw out a person, you say, if it's what we would like to do, you know, going forward. I will say also with the comments that have been made, you know, Mr. Davis is alluding to the email that Kate sent out about expected salary. Okay? I feel as like if we are asking the people in the audience to come back and kind of bid against themselves, that's a little bit uncomfortable as well. And Ms. Granberry is saying we have a salary that we can pay. So what is that? What are you willing to pay someone? You know, we know what Kate makes. We know what her, you know, her car benefit is. We know what her, her retirement benefits are. That's already in your budget. You know that you can pay those things as of right now. So that.
I guess my next question is, I could tell you what I feel comfortable going forward now with and they can all make a comment off of it?
I want to make sure we're first talking about one candidate.
Yes, I'm, I make a motion.
Hold on, hold on, Mike wants to speak.
I wouldn't. I question him.
Mike?
I'd just like, first of all, thank Kate for what she has done for our city. We may not always agree, but Kate has tried to run our city straight. And Kate come in at 85,000.
Eighty.
Eighty. And this is another thing we have to take in consideration when, when you do a contract, you know, and then when the budget comes around and somebody says, you know, 3% or 4% or 5%, whatever it is, the new city manager is going to get that also on top of, of what he gets.
Only if you negotiate.
Right.
And it will be negotiated. I mean, that's just, that's a given. I mean, that's, that's what that is. But I just want to make sure that, I want to make sure I do the citizens of Mount Pleasant right. That's what I want. That's what I want.
I think that's what everybody's here for, Ms. Willie.
Corey, I guess what I'm trying to get to and make sure I understand is, I guess we all do have a discussion about going forward. Well, I personally want to go forward with Mr. Cross and offer him a contract. Is this a time that I can stay a mount?
Yes, the way I would prefer that you did that is say, I'd like to move forward with Mr. Cross for these reasons. And I would make a motion that we set his salary at this.
Is there about to discuss it before I go forward?
That was going to be my next question.
Anybody got anything else to say?
Pam, you, hold on just a second. Ms. Granberry.
Mr. Cross could say.
When you, the salary, when you span the salary, also you've got to consider the benefits that come with it. Okay?
You can always, I just say it. Y'all don't have to agree.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's what we need to think about is the benefit that come with it and how much all that's going to add and together, obviously total is going to be for the people residents of Bible St. Patrick.
Corey provided us with the sheet right here that is in.
I got it.
In, in bullet point and in bold letters of what I feel like we should probably set for right now for the negotiation with whomever is the one chosen.
Okay, yes. So another option, if you would like to say, we want to do these things one at a time. Because I feel like maybe we're, you know, a complex motion where you said, I want to move forward with this person at this salary with these benefits might take us forever, you know? So if you wanted to do one at a time to make sure that we are kind of on the same page or you all are on the same page, that would be helpful as well. So if you wanted to start with just the person, you could do that. If you wanted to move forward with any other.
I think that would stay. In agreements with the person, it's just.
Okay, but I would feel like that in the minute if y'all did that on Thursday.
Mike?
But what you're saying right there, Corey, I totally agree to a certain degree. But you're like, Ms. Granberry said, there's a, who knows what the citizens of vote come November? So if this thing is going on and on and on, and here it comes up October, well, I think we got somebody. You know, I don't know, I don't know what that says for us presenting to the next commission that comes in.
I, I meant one at a time today. I didn't mean that we would keep pushing this decision. I meant it sounds like y'all might need to talk about each one of these items on this list.
One at a time.
So maybe.
Yes, that was my recommendation.
But first talk about the candidate, then the second, talk about the salary, then third, talk about term and just so on and so forth. So that we have very clear guidance on how to move forward. So I think that's what Ms. Alderson was getting to.
So.
Thank you.
All right. Where I see we are right now is that we probably need to decide who the person is that we're going to move forward with. And then I would say that we go. And then I would say that we go, as I was saying a minute ago, we go down this list of what we, we would put, the commission would ask you to negotiate.
All right.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. So with that being said, I would entertain anybody that might like to make a motion and then we move forward with it.
Okay, I'll repeat this thing. Okay. I would like to move forward with Mr. Cross as being our next city manager. And the reason why, because I like his background, his work he has done. I like his demeanor. I don't interview him personally. He was just, he said a lot of great things to me, and I think that he knows people that can help our town. So I would like to move forward with Mr. Cross as being the next city manager.
Okay.
And I'd like to second that. And for the reasons I stated when we first had a vote, in that I was impressed with his resume and I was very impressed with his interview with the gentleman from MTOC, as well as our first one interview. And I, I feel very comfortable. It was really important to me that he is gonna be here in town. And also that, that he is very well connected within Murray County and the different counties and cities, because we're gonna need all that connection and those, those friendships and work professional relationships that are so important to make sure that we're able to get things done. And that's already in place. And then, and then we've got the staff that's ready to come behind him and really take us to the next level.
Ms. Jackie, you got anything you'd like to add to that?
I am very satisfied with Mr. Cross, except like I say, I cannot accept the salaries and request his help.
Right now, you're just doing the person, right?
Just doing, just the person. Mike, anything you'd like to add?
Only thing I will say, Steve, there's no doubt that you can lead our city. I'm gonna say that. And another thing, take this here for this. You are a polished politician. Take that for granted. You are. You are, Steve. You're good. You're good. But I hate, at the same time, that our colleague right there, you know, is, it's gonna, you know, be, yeah, it's a hard, it, 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 it's a hard decision for me. I'm, I'm just gonna be honest. It's a hard decision for me.
All right, anybody got?
Cause y'all were almost like best friends. Or good friends. Let me put it that way. And, you know, it's just, but I appreciate it. Appreciate you, what you have done.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mike? I, uh, I'm gonna, I, as I have told people, I try to stay neutral as possible in conducting the meetings, but I, I would have to throw my support towards Steve as well. Steve and I had a very nice conversation today on Thursday. I could not get between, somebody taking too long. That's a good joke still. We can laugh about something. So I had the opportunity to talk to Steve today. And, uh, I, we're, we've had discussions about salary and other stuff, and I had a conversation with him today about that. I don't mind telling you. And so, um, he, he would have my vote as well. So with that, we have a motion and we have a second roll call, please, ma'am.
I'm glad you had an understanding about the money system, actually. Appreciate that.
Don't call me first. Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I'm gonna have to pass this round. Steve, you know, don't hold that against me, please.
Bill White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
So that's four, no, and you don't want me to come back to you, right?
No, no.
That will be a registered as a no vote. Thank you. All right, salary, let's, let's keep moving forward, please, salary.
Hang on, hang on one second. I thought if you pass, you could come back.
You can.
That's why I just asked.
You just asked and you said no, you didn't want to.
Did you pass?
She, she voted yes the second time.
Second time.
Yeah.
But not the first time.
Correct.
And you just said you didn't want to vote.
You, you, if you want it to pass, to you, we'll do that.
I didn't, I thought when somebody made a vote, that was the vote. If, if, if you say, don't come to me, go over to somebody, yeah.
She'd all be called on first.
I'm always called on first. That's why I start asking.
It's right there.
And I, and I can do that according to the rules. Yes.
But really, extension, I think, is what Kate read yours as, or would you like to vote on that?
No, no, I, no, my, mine was a.
So it's still a four zero. Okay.
Four one.
Four one, and a, a pass is a no vote. And Corey's claim, that's Thursday night.
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank y'all very much. All right, salary, we'll move right along to, and is there anybody would like to make a number that we should throw out there? And I'll tell you what my number is. One twenty.
That what you and Steve?
No. It's not my role, Mike.
I'm just going by what you said earlier, mate.
I had a great conversation with the young man today. You had the same opportunity last Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
That's exactly the same number that I had.
Okay, um, do we need to put these in this form of a motion?
If, if you are wanting that to be part of a contract that I bring back.
Yes, ma'am, please. Okay, then we have.
They said that would be the base.
That would be the base. We're, we're gonna go down each one of these bullet point items. So I will make a motion that we begin the negotiations in one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
You got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I just can't see the citizens paying this kind of money. I'm sorry.
Is that a no?
Yes, it's a no.
Okay. Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, term of contract. Again, I think I've heard a lot of conversation up here about the first year, of which it is very well pointed out in here that it, the exceptions of the reasons that we could terminate a contract legally, that means incompetence, malfeasance, misfeasance, and neglect of you.
And, and you don't, you don't have to have a written contract, but that is the best.
We're going to.
Um, I just want to throw that out there. But yes, term of contract, I think Ms. Granberry has said she would, one year, that's also the same term as the, can't fire them unless, that would also give time for a new commission to get acclimated as a city manager, but also, you know, not be bound to a.
And it's not that I'm, it's not that I'm being ungrateful. It's just that, you know, like I say, you've got three more commissioners coming up here. And even at one twenty, if you gotta pay one working commission and one commission is not here because you're in a contract, I'm looking at the city of Mount Pleasant. People can't afford that. So I make a motion for a year contract.
I second it.
You got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Just want to make sure. So that was Ms. Granberry and Ms. Alderson.
Oh.
Okay. Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis, you want to come back to you?
No, 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 that was my.
So that's four one.
Maybe I should have just said present.
Okay, educational incentive is a piece of what our current handbook calls for.
It doesn't necessarily have to apply to a city manager, though. The handbook is for employees and you only have one, one employee, and that is the city manager. The handbook is for all the other employees, but it's up to you to negotiate that.
But it is part of our handbook. So anybody in, in comments on that?
What kind of range, price terms are we talking about with education? Because he already has a masters.
You, you could look at this from several different angles. I think you could say, like, we are hiring him based on his education and experience, and so therefore that base salary is your education. You could say that you felt like they should get additional compensation because of education. It, it's, again, this is negotiable. That's up to y'all, whether or not that's something you wanted to add in or not.
So, and Ms. Granberry, so you know, the handbook for the other employees was kind of created years ago so that we had, would have employees that would further their education that maybe wouldn't otherwise. And it's written in there as four percent for an associate, eight percent for a bachelor's, and twelve percent for a masters. But again, it, it's always negotiable. A lot of places, as Corey said, hire based on your education and we don't give you more education, but, but it's up to all you to decide that.
Comments?
So he's at the top of the range as far as our education goes.
Be twelve percent. If, if you decide to do that, it doesn't.
But he has an aspect of it.
Yeah, but she, the handbook is for employees.
Okay.
And the city manager is an employee of the commission, not an employee of the city. I mean, that makes sense.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Entertain whatever somebody may want to bring up.
Education. I guess I would like to make a motion that that would be included in the salary. We would not add it in addition to that since he already has the masters.
Okay.
I second that.
We got a motion and a second roll call, please.
So Ms. Johnson and Ms. Granberry, thank you. Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I can say yes.
Bill White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
That's five.
Okay, vehicle allowance. Think it's almost a requirement. We don't provide a vehicle. Do that to you, you know? And Kate has always lived with that, but I, we are currently giving Kate vehicle allowance, which I feel we should, because we're, we're not providing one. So I'll entertain whatever anybody will throw out there.
The way it's written right now for me is that there is a vehicle allowance, but if I leave the state or go far for a conference, I'm reimbursed for mileage based on the IRS standards. It's the way it currently is.
I make a motion that we start off this vehicle allowance at five thousand and if you go out of state, what Kate did, give him the mileage allowance.
Um, be, before you.
It's a choice.
Well, she made the motion. Uh, Kate's is five thousand, I believe. That's right. And the, the mileage thing is part of a different policy, so that would be, um.
It's fine.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure they understand.
Okay, so I just need to say that.
That would be continued education, wouldn't it? The values would be on the continued education.
And training.
And training, yeah.
It might be.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure, you know, when we say five thousand, I don't, I don't want to be no misunderstanding, you know, that it's five thousand annually and not. Yeah.
Yes.
yearly. Hey, hey, we get Steve, and Steve says, hey, hey, I'm getting five thousand.
So the five thousand, right now, the way it works is, um, for, for me, you do it every six months, twenty-two, twenty-five hundred, and then twenty-five hundred, because you get paid twice a month and it's better for the individual to not have a larger paycheck, because you, it hurts in your taxes. So in an off payroll week, uh, they get a check. So I'm right now doing it in like February and September.
I'm good with that.
I, I don't, did we have a second on that?
Sorry, we cut her off, so she would like to make a motion for a state car allowance of five thousand dollars plus the, the same mileage, uh, rules that Kate is currently under.
Yes. Just Louis said by yearly, two, two thousand five hundred by yearly.
Annually.
Annually, yes.
Five thousand annually, twenty-five hundred by annual.
Yes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, vacation time. And again, I want everybody to keep in mind, this is the first year. We're negotiating one-year contract, or we're discussing a one-year contract at this time.
He's pointing out it's the first year.
My, my memory is I have three weeks.
I'd like to recommend eighty hours. First year.
I second it.
Okay, then I'll make that in form of a motion. I make a motion with eighty hours for first year.
And I second it.
All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Eighty hours for the first year.
Yes.
It's two weeks. That's it.
That's with the, that's the motion on the floor. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
I'm good with that.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, benefits. List of the benefits available to city employees has been handed out. The city will provide the city manager and his dependents or hers with all of the health and dental insurance benefits, which are provided for regular, full-time employees of the city upon the same terms that these benefits are made available to such employees. That's all.
You can be, Corey. I did, I did not hand that out, so you don't have that in front of you, uh, shipper, I think, or.
I said, I don't have it.
Yeah, um, I, it's what you emailed me earlier, that we, hey, I didn't send it to them, but it's just the regular available benefits.
I'm just reading right off of this.
Yeah, sorry.
He may have, but I don't have it.
I don't. I'm reading it right off of this.
I said in the list that I had handed out to you. I did not do that. It's not part of that packet that you received.
So you all know right now, employees that have family coverage, we, 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 uh, take about thirty percent, maybe a little bit less than that, that the employee pays that part of it. The rest, the city is covering. We cover the employee a hundred percent right now. Basically, I think what we're saying is the same benefit, that same benefit.
Okay.
Ms. Alderson?
I make a motion that we pay the same benefits that our employees get.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Too fast for me. Um, Ms. Granberry?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Fair enough, yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, professional memberships and continuing education. Kate, what are your professional memberships right now?
Right now is TCMA, TML. I was one year ICMA. It is an extension membership and I, I backed out of that. So right now, the biggest benefit I get right now is Tennessee City Managers. Going to two meetings a year with your peers is very, very helpful for me.
Yeah, I would say so.
And then sometimes the TML.
And TSL.
Those two, those two conferences wouldn't be a thousand dollars, even with hotels, because it's usually. Yeah, but ours are, ours are usually Franklin. I have had one, I have had one in Pigeon Forge, but I stayed two nights at a hotel for, really, let's say fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Max.
I think that, that, yeah. I mean, you can say two thousand if you want to, but, um.
And what's the, uh, the other one, uh, the international, how, how, does that mean?
They have regional conferences, so that's gonna be a little bit more expensive, because you're traveling to, you know, maybe to Florida or maybe to even Vegas or something like that. And then they have a, a, a annual meeting. And those are the ones that I got a little bit away from. They actually had a, their national meeting in Nashville a few years ago. But typically, it's flight and some other expenses, hotel and that. So I have not done that. I've not done the international to the managers.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Would it be possible to go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, memberships that are currently there and then allow Steve to come before us if he finds other things that he would like to do and then we could just approve that on, um, because there, it's really important to do those things.
Thank you, Ed.
And, and learning. So I think if we just go ahead and approve basically all the memberships we currently have or whatever we're doing, and then allow him to pick the things that he thinks are important to him.[1743.00]
Yes, either current memberships or a dollar amount and he can always add to that. Because I would not want to say I'm the only one that knows the right things to do. There might be other things out there.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on one second. Corey acted like she wanted to talk.
No, I think that it's fine. I think that's actually what Kate caught. Kate's contract currently says that, you know, after. I can't remember if it lists like the, the one, the memberships that she already has in the conferences or if it gives a dollar amount instead of anything above that, has to come back before y'all. So that would just be.
I think it's the conferences and then it's in the budget. And if it's not, you'd have to approve that.
Yeah. Okay, so yes, I think that's a perfect way to handle this part.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we allow um, the professional memberships that exist currently. And anything over and above that, we just need to come to us for approval.
I second it.
We got a number of seconds. Roll call, please.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I'm like, yes, I'm good with it.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
And Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Severance. No.
I did have a note on your, on your paper that I'm not really sure the enforceability of these.
I wondered that too because you're signing a one-year contract. Now, whether you can get out of it is if they basically break the law.
Right, so um.
So I can make a motion that you don't break the law in there? If it was longer than a year, the severance would be applicable.
Right, and you know, since you've already voted on a year, I feel like that would be something that you would consider when you revisit.
Closer to the end of contract, revisit, make a motion to revisit at the end of contract.
Okay.
So you're not going to offer it? Do you even need a motion?
If, I mean, I would like them guided.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see it as part of the contract. I mean, we're signing a one-year contract.
He, he makes a little.
Yeah, I think you're all saying the same thing, right?
Yeah.
We would not consider it as part of this contract and that would be something that y'all would.
Come back and.
Come back and fuck that in.
Yeah.
Yes.
My current is four months, just for your information.
Four months?
Mm-hmm.
But you're well beyond that first year.
Fire me tomorrow, I'd have fun. Is that a request for you?
She can keep on agreeing. That's not a motion.
All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we revisit this in six months, before this contract is up.
Okay.
No, you can.
Um. Do you? So you would still have that, the, you would be, you would be.
Six months left, yeah.
Yeah, you would still have six months left in the contract. You did it that way.
When you do it at a year.
I think it would make more sense to do that.
Do it a year.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion, we revisit this at the year.
We have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Granberry, yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Steve, this is the young lady you'll be speaking with. So thank you very much. All right. Anything, uh, any of the commissioners would like to add? All right, general comments from citizens. Gwen Huffer, and if I'm messing that up, I am sorry. Please come forward and uh, to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Hi, um, my name's Gwen Huffer. I live at three ninety-five Canyon Road. I'm sorry, three ninety-five Canyon Road.
Okay, okay, didn't pick up on that.
Um, my question is, um, we had the county to pave the road up, right up to the city limits of Mount Pleasant. So that left our road like in front of our house and the others would still be pothos in them and stuff. And we see the requesting for that part, the rest of the road up to the bypass, if nothing else, to be paved. Um, I think we request that before when they did the same thing and we got it done. Um. The least would be to fix the pothos because they're really bad.
Okay.
And um, one of the roads leads up to the park too, but um. The thing is, is that Canyon Road is really bad there going up to the bypass, up to where the city was.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's my, my concern.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
What, Kate, if you would?
Thank you.
Okay. The park is, and the road, I think the road is ours.
Kate, if you would, would you please?
I know we can do with.
Yeah, would you please get with Ted and Ted is the department head over that and we'll get a look at it for you. Kim Bowie?
Yeah.
Okay, same thing?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Paula Goodman? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name and address.
Paula Goodman, I live on Polk Lane. My question is, what is the latest on the traffic light at Zion Road, Polk Lane and two forty-three?
I can tell you exactly what it is. Um, City of Columbia has agreed to build that red light.
City of Columbia?
Their developer.
Their developer is going to be required to do that. Uh, they're going to be developing a great deal of the property from Ridley Park all the way down. On the west side of the road and part of their streaks plan that was approved by the state. There's going to be a red light at Ridley Park. There's going to be a red light at Old Zion Road and there's going to be a red light at Zion and Polk.
If you've noticed out there, they've surveyed that.
They've already started surveying. And.
Okay, who's going to be first?
We, we.
We want to be first.
My understanding is the first one is closest to Ridley Park because they're changing the entrance.
All right.
We waited on this for years.
All right, uh, everybody just keep in, um, keep with our policy. This is supposed to be a time where you just speak to the commission. Um, and they are not really supposed to be interacting and answering your questions.
Yes.
Why? Um, because this is just general comment. So you have three minutes uninterrupted to speak to them. But generally what they'll do is just say, you know, thank you for your comment and they might direct it to somebody else on staff to answer questions at a later time.
Okay, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Would prefer you not to ask questions, just speak to them.
Paving of Polk Lane.
Get with Ted, please.
Yeah, I mean, paving in general is a city priority.
Yes.
And we don't have the funding for it right now.
Really?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that does entertain a mo- motion to adjourn.
I'd like to say something later before we adjourn. Uh, that comment you just, you just got thrown naked. That was, that is unnecessary, what you just said, unnecessary. And another thing about Polk Lane. That has been in the city since nineteen and I know before ninety-one, because that's when I moved up there. And I'm like this right here. If the city cannot give us the services that they give everybody else. I'm just telling you, Ms. Paula, you know, you need to get up a petition. Because that's way too long for a city to be drawing tax money off people that they cannot provide services for. I'm just letting you know.
Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
You got a second? All those in favor, aye. Close, motion carries. Thanks, everybody for being here.